All right, we're gonna get started. I'm sorry, I don't wanna work this up any longer.
Okay.
We have all the people, schedules involved. Um, we're going, I'm not even gonna bother, we're calling the meeting to order at one oh five. Um, we have three things on the agenda for today's, but the services, curriculum development and district overview. Um, we're gonna get started with Dr. Chuck Smith in curriculum, then we'll start with Dr. Kevin Smith, and then finish up with Andrea. And then if we have time at the end, I'm hoping of our board, we can just sort of chat for a few minutes amongst ourselves. Okay?
Okay, so, um, there are two cost centers that I'm responsible for. One is the instructional improvement program twenty-two-ten, and the testing, which is twenty-one-four-two. Um, you know, relatively speaking, I have a small budget. Most of my priorities are best expressed through the building budgets. Um, in here are really things that are just, things that are done district-wide. And again, my priorities are curriculum assessment, instruction, and professional learning. And so you'll notice in here that, um, you know, there are relatively few staffing positions here. There are two coordinators. Kevin Mean, who is the science teacher, who's split between Middlebrook and, I'm sorry, between Cider Mill and Miller Driscoll. The five district-wide FAPA positions, which include, I'm sorry, instructional leader positions, which include FAPA, PE, health, library, media, and the team program, which is for beginning teachers. Um, you'll notice that there is some monies in here for professional learning, um, consultants.
Chuck, can I just, what page are you referring to, right at the top?
Okay, so it is page four under the district.
Under twenty-two-ten?
Yes.
Yeah, it says district instructional improvements.
Got it.
So that's all you, all the twenty-two-ten? Okay.
Yes. I also have a number of FAPA expenses in here, and those are for district-wide FAPA activities, such as the international art show and things like that. Okay?
Yep.
So, just in terms of variances, you'll notice that there is a large increase in additional time in my budget. That's not really a change. All I did was I collected all of the curriculum days, summer curriculum days, and put them under my budget. Um, in prior years, they were divvied up among the schools. That became something of a problem. So, we're allotted a certain number of days, about seven hundred days. We allot them to the schools, they make plans for them. But what ends up happening is that they don't use them all, but they don't tell me until it's too late to reallocate them to other projects. So it's much easier for me to manage, because I am the responsible person for managing and reviewing all of this, that I have the days, I've doled out a hundred and twenty-five to each teacher, I've kept two hundred in my budget, um, specifically for those curriculum areas where we are conducting reviews. So for instance, this year, we will be doing a math review, and we'll be reviewing PE and health. So, um, that will result in some pretty significant summer work, and I will direct those two hundred days.
How many did you say were allotted to each teacher?
Each building is a hundred and twenty-five.
Each building, not each teacher?
Each building, not each teacher.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Did I say teacher?
You did. Yeah.
Mid-building.
It's like, wow, I, that's, wow, wow.
That's a lot.
Okay, and then you keep two hundred?
I keep two hundred at the district level, specifically for those curriculum areas that are being reviewed that year.
Okay.
It was just an easier way for me to manage this, and I put into place a whole system where, um, I will know fairly early on whether those, um, all of those a hundred and twenty-five days at each building have been allotted, and that I can then pull back any that are unused and reallocate them to other areas. Because we get many more requests for curriculum work over the summer than we can approve.
Okay.
Make sense? Okay.
So, the need always exceeds the
Allotment.
Supply?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, otherwise, seven hundred sounds a little formulaic, you know, if one year you need eight hundred, and the next year you need four fifty.
Yes.
But you always exceed seven hundred in terms of requests?
Every year that I've been here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Now, just to correct that, the first year, we were way under, um, the allotment. But as we've ramped up this process of continually reviewing curriculum areas, um, and setting higher expectations for what curriculum should look like, those requests have been increasing, and we've far exceeded requests versus what we thought.
Okay.
Now, most of the time, if I pull back the ones that are unused, I can reallocate and meet everybody's needs. Is that, so?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Sure. That's about the increase, right?
Yeah, it's not really increased, 'cause there's a, a decrease at the building level.
Did, it is leveled, basically?
Yes.
Basically, we just, it's about.
There are a couple of increases that I'll go over.
But it's, okay.
Um, so, additional time classified, you'll also see an increase in my budget, but that was simply because it was moved from the finance office. Those are days for my secretary. There was an increase in substitutes for in-service training, but that was simply due to an increase in substitute rate from ninety-five to a hundred dollars. There are some regular cost increases around training, conferences, and consultants. And there was a fairly large increase under contract services for computer. We use a program known as IXL for reading and math. It's a way for students to practice their learning in those areas. Um, the three-year lease was up, and so this year, they require a fifty percent down, down payment for the next three-year cost. So, that's why it looks like a large increase. You know, I'm also in, in charge of the testing budget, which is the next, or the previous, I think. I don't know how it is in your budget, but it's the, uh, testing cost center.
It's like page three?
Okay, page three, it's right before.
What, testing cost center isn't twenty-two-ten, it's something else?
Page three.
Page three.
Twenty-one-four-two. It's under twenty-one-four-two.
Yeah, it's the one oh seven.
These are just, again, same things that we've always done. The reason there's an increase under the computer, we are switching our data warehouse to power analytics and assessment. It's part of Power School. So, previously, that was divvied up among the schools. That has now been pulled, the cost of that has now been pulled into my budget. And then testing and evaluation supplies. We are doing some testing around MAP and the Apple, which is for world languages, and we need to purchase headphones for those, because, um, particularly at Miller Driscoll, the way the test works is that it's read aloud to kids, and when you have groups of kids in a classroom, you have to have the headphones. Apple is also an oral test, so they have to have headphones. They have to have good quality headphones.
Are, go ahead. Are all of our language labs Apple?
The language labs at the high school?
Sony Virtuoso, the platform.
Is it Aegis Voice?
So, ah, oh, just to be clear, Apple is, um, it's a proficiency test.
It's not.
That we administer in grades five, eight, and after level three at the high school.
It's not from the corporation?
It's not one of them.
No, it's not Apple, like, like a computer.
It's an acronym.
I'm sorry.
It's an acronym.
Yeah, Apple stands.
But what is the acronym? It's not.
It's proficiency in world languages. I don't know.
Apple.
It's A-P-P-E-L.
It's L.
Apple.
And I think that, to answer your question, I think that, um, if memory serves, that, um, language labs are PC-based. We use a Sony Virtuoso.
Yes.
As they, software. Can you, just as a side note, they, um, with some exciting developments as a result of implementing the Apple assessment. We're just talking with the two ILs in world language this week.
So, the state education department, and we're gonna be talking about this at our next teaching and learning committee, has approved what's known as the seal of biliteracy. So for our students who score a three or better on all four components of the Apple at the high school level, can obtain a seal of biliteracy on their transcript or on their diplomas. In California, at this point, that actually will translate into college credit. So our anticipation is, we're gonna move forward, hopefully with the approval of the board, awarding our students that seal of biliteracy, and I would anticipate in a few years, that will earn them some beginning college credit in world languages. It's nice.
And it's great.
That was passed by the legislature this year.
Yes.
So, like, you don't need us, yeah? Don't we have to do that?
I think it's an option.
No, it's optional. And I think it's, it's a, you know, we, we would request board approval as a, really as a, as a number one, to approve it, but also as a symbol of support and recognition as a way to celebrate the change.
So the state did something good?
Yes!
It's great.
But it doesn't cost that much. We were doing the testing anyway, so, or, or, they can qualify either through AP or through the Apple, so it's, it's a multiple ways to.
Oh, okay.
And Chuck, what about the general supplies line there?
Under testing, or?
Mm-hmm. Jumped to three hundred dollars. It's a twenty, two hundred and twenty percent increase?
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I jumped that much.
What are you looking at?
Sixty-one hundred?
So, on the twenty-one-four-two.
Twenty-one-four-two, sixty-one hundred.
Right.
Co-education general supplies.
Maybe that's where the headphones.
Headphones, Kalia headphones.
Yes, it's the headphones.
That's where the headphones are.
Again, these have to be fairly high-quality headphones.
Is there any opportunity to get a PTA grant for that? 'Cause Apple is a new program that we're taking on.
Well, again, it's for both Miller Driscoll and the high school, um, and actually Middlebrook and Cider Mill. I guess I kind of figured, Lori, that it, it's part of our testing program, so it was our obligation to provide the supplies needed to do the testing.
What are we using now? Are we replacing?
We are replacing, yes.
And so, you can't trust that the kids can bring headphones that would work from home?
Again, for the Apple, they have to be the covered collar.
It has to cover their entire ear.
Yes.
And it also does equity, in terms of qual, everyone has the same.
Quality of the sound system, okay.
Can I ask a question about instructional leaders?
Yes.
If you could please explain this to me, I think I ask this every year. When we, um, adopted the coaching model, I thought that we had agreed to eliminate all instructional leader positions at all schools except for the high school. So when I see instructional leaders throughout the lower buildings, it just, can you, please explain that to me?
We, um, eliminated the instructional leader positions in the areas in which we hired coordinators. So for instance, English Language Arts, Social Studies, Science and Math, those instructional leaders were eliminated. I think there are some vestiges. I know there is a special ed.
Which we, we kept, 'cause we felt like we needed it, and we don't have a commensurate coordinator position. Um, world language we kept.
World language we kept. At the district level, we've always had these ILs, and they are district-wide. So, the IL, for instance, for FAPA is for all four buildings.
Okay.
The PE health is for all four buildings. The team is for all four buildings.
And then there are other iterations, so at Cider Mill and at Middlebrook, I think they might be coded in the budget as instructional leaders, but those are team leaders.
Yes.
So their function is different.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Since someone already said the word coaching, I'm gonna ask it. Obviously, it's, it's been a, you, you've heard my speech about it's been a budget and publicity thing in prior years before, before this year. And in order to move forward on a more positive note this year about coaching, um, you know, we listened very closely to what the principals said about it, which was illuminating, um, and, you know, sort of requests for what kind of information can be provided, of its impact, um, how much further do you think you have to go? And to the extent possible, is there any way of sensing what the teacher's feedback might be? So, those are kind of, since you're the district coordinator of all of that, what kind of information can you provide?
Can I share some things with you?
Please.
Okay, so the first thing I wanna share, I think some board members have seen this, and this is what we used as the research base for, um, coaching.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
I think, you know, period five is the loudest in the library. So, period five is where it would not be as loud. But it's just dark. I heard that one too.
Is this the same?
All right, so this is some data, um, gathered by some very important people in the area of instructional coaching nationwide, Joyce and Shallows. And this is their research on the effectiveness of various ways in which we provide professional learning. Down the left-hand column, you'll notice, um, the ways in which we can provide professional learning. The first is theory, which is basically sitting in a workshop, listening to somebody talk to you. Demonstration is when that person actually demonstrates the particular instructional strategy. Practice is when the workshop person has the staff actually practice the strategy right then and there, versus coaching, which is embedded job professional learning. Across the top, we're looking at the kind of dependent variables. How does it affect the knowledge level of the staff, their skill attainment, and whether it actually transfers into, um, practice? I think the numbers kind of speak for themselves right here. You know, unfortunately, traditional workshop, even when you add to it some modeling and practice, we're not seeing transfer into the classroom. It's only when they have the ability to have somebody next to them in the situation, coaching them through it, do we see the level of transfer that we wanna see. You know, it's fine, I know myself, when I'm at a workshop, it's nice to listen to it. But then when you go back to your classroom or your office, you know, you get caught up in what you're doing. You need somebody sitting right there, problem-solving around, how am I gonna use this strategy in this classroom with these kids? And providing me with, um, some support, either modeling it, um, doing it together, or observing the teacher doing it and providing feedback. That's when you're gonna see the most transfer into the classroom. You know, I do think there is some place for workshops, but given this data, if we wanna see our professional learning have an impact on kids, really coaching, um, the research shows that that's the best way to do it. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does, and I, I certainly, um, understand the research and the rationale, and perhaps the board can do an even, um, more aggressive job this year of explaining that that is the best skill application around. It's also the expensive one.
Yes, it is.
But the impact on instructional practices is more dramatic, it's more real, it's more consistent. So I think there are lots of, of arguments, um, to be made. And we're the, in the third year. So I'm wondering, can you talk about a little bit the progress at the different buildings?
Sure.
It must have been, you know, it's new.
Yes.
In year one, but now it's less new. And obviously, there are coaching models, and there are, you know, the quality of the coaches has to come into play.
Absolutely.
So can you talk about the background of the coaches?
Sure.
And, and might just be interesting, like, how many of them were in-house teachers? How many of them were hired outside? Were they all classroom teachers? Again, just a way of sort of understanding and bolstering the confidence in this model.
Sure, sure. So, like any new, um, program or initiative, there were some growing pains. I think certain schools were a little bit more ready for coaching, because they had already been doing some of it already. You know, traditionally, our reading people split their time between doing direct intervention with students and coaching teachers. That isn't always an efficient model. You know, teachers would say, you know, I could do more coaching if I didn't have these kids that I have to see, or I would do better with these kids I have to see if I didn't have to consult with teachers. We've split those into two separate positions. We have academic interventionists versus coaches, so that they can really focus on those two functions, appropriately and effectively. So, most of the coaches we hired were internal. That's a commitment that we made when we made the transition, that we would hire internal people. In literacy, most of them are reading specialists. Again, they had been doing a combination of some coaching and intervention prior to this, this change. There was one math coach who was hired externally, um, and that was because we did not have any math applicants internally at the Middlebrook level. You know, I have to say, Cider Mill is probably the most advanced school we have in terms of coaching. And I do have something I wanted to share with you as an idea of how we can measure impact that they're doing at Cider Mill. I think at Middlebrook, it was our biggest challenge. I don't know that the staff were... I'm gonna choose my words carefully here.
Your own friends.
I know.
No, but, I mean, can I?
Sure.
I'm willing to go on the, I mean, so Middlebrook has had an incredible amount of transition in the last few years, with Julie Harris retiring, Rea coming in, Rea moving out to a new position. And I think that, um, that was rough, and so the coaching seemed like just something new. Whereas at Cider Mill and Middle, Miller Driscoll, where they already had the reading coaches in place already before we added the math in. And so I think it was just, you know, kind of the perfect storm. Um, again, and I think they felt with each new principal, things had changed, and the culture felt, they felt, you know, there was lack of communication, there was poor, you know what I mean? Like, it was this great, I mean, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chuck doesn't want to put it that way, but, I mean, I think it was just, you know, it's an example of when you're dealing with people, and they're great people.
And I have to be honest, I'm just gonna be honest, I know we're on camera, I'm not so sure we made the best choices of coaches at that particular school. I think they are effective coaches, but they weren't effective in a climate where teachers were feeling a little bit uneasy with a lot of change. So we've actually pushed reset on the coaching, um, program at Middlebrook. We have two new coaches at that position. We have a principal who is very committed to this model, and I'm sure we're gonna see much more success now, that we've changed that.
Was the team, was the team concept at Middlebrook a factor in reset, in how the whole thing developed or worked initially? Did that come into play at all?
I don't think so.
I, I wouldn't think it would, but I'd say.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, I think there are, as Laura mentioned, there were some other really big cultural, school-building cultural implications that, you know, I'd say for my own part, I underestimated. Uh, I also think the other, you know, just significant change, that was the school where you had a handful of people who functioned for a number of years as instructional leaders. And that was a model that was successful, although as part of, you know, Chuck has reported previously, through his own entry plan, as he was probing some of these questions, they were all recognizing the limitations of that model in light of the new demands around transitioning to Common Core standards. But, but, you know, I mean, there were, you know, five people in that building, and four people, you know, lost a stipend, you know, that they had received for a number of years. And it was, we generously support these stipends, so, um, I, I think that also played into it. And then they also had a lot of logistical concerns. So, you know, I, I, that's one of those buildings where, I, I don't doubt the decision. I, I think that building needed a different approach in terms of how we, um, worked with that staff to communicate the change and, um, promote further investment.
And, uh, the timing seemed to be around the implementation of the Common Core state standards, and those are dramatically different from older standards. So, to whatever, I, I remember many districts across the state, just, you know, their heads kind of exploded about the Common Core state standards. Not that they were bad, but just that it was so, and not at all, but they were just so different. And it would, there was a, a big gap, you know, to sort of be able to achieve them. Um, and then you bring in the tools that are also different, coaching perhaps being one of those tools. And it just gets wrapped into this whole era of change. But now that we're three years in, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, to what extent are you, and it sounds like, I know the answer to this, but are you assured that it is the path forward?
Absolutely.
And, um, you know, how, and, and the evidence piece, you know, you, you said you're gonna talk about Cider Mill and how to, how to do the impact, but also at the high school and the, and the middle school, it's a little different at the secondary level? And if, you know, to some extent, do we have, I don't wanna say do we have enough coaches, but are they, are there enough of them to really make an impact? You know, like, if you only get coached once every six months, you can't expect much. So is there a way of understanding what, uh, how much time teachers get to interface with a coach, and what a typical schedule would look like?
Well, unfortunately, given budget constraints, we are, all of our coaches coach people in two subject areas. So they're humanities coaches, they do ELA and social studies, um, and then we have science and math. So what we've tried to do is to, um, roll this out in a way that will have an impact. So they're not coaching every teacher every year. We started with ELA, because they're, particularly, like, at Middlebrook, we were rolling out new units, a new workshop model. The ELA teachers needed intensive support. So the social studies people, who were actually going through a curriculum review, we didn't feel were ready for coaching. So they focused on English Language Arts.
Okay.
Now that we're rolling out the social studies unit, the focus has now switched to the, um, uh, social studies department.
Okay.
So, we're, we're trying to stagger this, so that people are getting the support they need when they need it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
No, and I, and I think that would be important for the board to highlight, too, that there's a cycle to it, that's built on the curriculum needs. So it's not, it's not a one-to-one model.
No, no.
Yeah.
And I was just about to say that, as it's grown and we become better at this, we're learning alternative ways in which, um, coaches can support teachers. So for instance, you heard this year, there's a, a renewed emphasis on their involvement in IETs, which would be more of a group coaching situation. So I think we're impacting a greater number of people when we broaden the modes in which we provide coaching.
Yeah, and I think the idea of leveraging skills, I, I think that is the whole coaching thing, and if you can put in that into the IETs, and, or I, whatever they are.
Yes.
Um, that that would, that would be helpful. And then, the last question, and I will be quiet about this, I'm sorry to take up so much airtime, but, um, the, when you talk to teachers, or observe teachers, or hear coaches talk about teachers, or principals talk about teachers, what, what is sort of on-the-ground kind of perspective?
Around coaching?
Around coaching, yeah.
I think it varies by building.
Okay.
I mean, Kevin and I this week were at Miller Driscoll, and without us prompting, you know, I think your question was, what's going well? To a person, they were praising their coaches and, um, trying to protect them. They didn't wanna lose them. I would say the same as at Cider Mill, absolutely. The high school, too, I, I'm not so sure they were receptive the first year, but now that they see how it's working, I hear very, very positive things about all of the coaches. And the particular coaches that we had, um, Trudy Denton was actually the, um, math coach at the high school. She's now the K to eight math coordinator, but she was the, um, first math coach. I think she won over that staff, just in her approach. She, she's a, they're an amazingly savvy educator, and, and really, I think, because math department can be challenging, and I think she did a very, very good job. Eileen Foley also, although Eileen has her, um, personality quirks, I think did a marvelous job of working, particularly with ELA, in setting up lab sites, utilizing the consultant, um, particularly around argument providing, so it went very well.
Okay, okay.
You know, Middlebrook is a different story.
It's still a challenge.
It's still a challenge.
Is it moving?
It is moving.
In the right direction?
Yes. I think the people we have in place right now are the right people. They now need time to gain the, you know, a lot of this is building relationships, so they've only been in the position six months, so they need to continue to develop those relationships and trust, and then I think we will see a change in, um, perspective around coaching at Middlebrook.
Okay, and I, and I hate to keep, you know, keep bringing this topic up, but I, but I want you to understand that the reason is, is just the noise that we hear outside, and it is a big investment. And I absolutely appreciate your descriptions and, um, the history and the rationale, and, and perhaps, you know, as a board, we just need to, if it were to come up in some budget fight. and perhaps, you know, as a board, we just need to, if it were to come up in some budget fight, be able to just, you know, sort of have the talking points that you all live and breathe.
Yes.
And, um, you know, as we interface with the public, be assured. So when we get an anonymous letter or a whisper or a phone call, that we just have a better handle about it. And that's, that's all that our quest, or at least my questions were trying to get at.
I understand.
Okay.
Chuck, is there, oh, go ahead. You're answering, Debbie. I just have a question about coaching.
The only thing I was gonna say is that the evaluation of coaching is a very challenging endeavor, right? It takes time to have an effect. Collecting data on their effects can be particularly challenging. I actually have something that I wanna share with you as one way that we can measure impact. And it comes from Cider Mill because I think, again, they're in a more advanced stage, they're much better at documenting the work that they do. So I'm gonna pass this around. I don't expect an answer now, but if you could take some time to look this over. Basically, what they've done is they've documented the work that they've done as coaches over the past three years or so, maybe even five years, that I think might help the board to understand the type of work they're doing and what impact that may have on instructional planning.
Chuck, is there ever a discussion on having a world language coach? Cause that's an area that has not been.
No. Yeah, I-
I don't know. Is there, no, I mean, just say, no, we haven't talked about it.
We've, we've actually discussed whether or not it would be best to have a language arts coordinator. I hope you don't mind me bringing this up. One of the challenges around helping people grow as world language teachers is that you should know the content. You should be able to speak the language. Right now, the people who are going in and evaluating these teachers, particularly at the secondary level, don't necessarily understand everything that's being said in the classroom, right?
Makes sense, yeah.
So, um- You know, part of our role as evaluators is to coach teachers in instructional improvement. So personally, I would start with a world language coordinator who could be their evaluator and provide more useful feedback around content.
That's, yeah, that's a lot of sense.
Quick question regarding, um, Cider Mill and Miller Driscoll each have two humanities coaches, whereas Middlebrook and the high school only have one. And is that because the program has been more successful at the lower schools, or is it simply that-
Well, there are more teachers who teach language arts at the lower schools than there are at the upper schools. That was really our thinking about that. And actually, there are three coaches at Miller Driscoll and two at Cider Mill.
There's three humanities coaches?
At Miller Driscoll.
Oh, okay.
So basically, what we did was we divided the staff between reading interventionists and reading coaches. At Miller Driscoll, they split them three-three. So there are three interventionists, three coaches. Jen Mitchell preferred to have two coaches and four interventionists because she assigned her interventionists by house.
Okay.
So the coaches at Cider Mill split the caseload north and south.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yes, yeah.
I say makes sense a lot, you'll just have to be used to it.
Chuck, do you have a list of how Wilton's coaching model compares against other schools in our town?
Actually, Kim Beck just emailed me to collect that data among Dirk.
Okay.
So as soon as we all populate that Google form, I can share that with you.
Thank you.
I'll take that.
Um, could you please finish the list you just started of how many coaches we have in each school?
Sure. So in each of the schools, we have one math coach in all four schools. For language arts, again, we have three at Miller Driscoll, two at Cider Mill, and one at Middlebrook, and one at the high school.
Did I hear we have a STEM coach at the high school?
He uses that term. We've been saying they're math-science coaches.
So that's this one person?
Yes. There is no S-.
And there's no recommendation to increase or decrease that number?
Not at this point. No, I think, I think we have enough coaches at this point.
Okay.
We don't have any in special ed.
Yeah, let me correct that. If I were to recommend any more coaches, it would be in the area of special education. I think, um, the special ed teachers could really use it coaching.
How, how many? Like, I mean, cause, I mean, the special ed at the high school level, I mean, you know what I mean, like as they, they need to be different.
Yeah. If I, if I had, you know, just thinking about this, if, if I had a way to think about coaching for special education, I think you need two different areas. You need instruction. So we need people who can work with youngsters with dyslexia and math disabilities, and executive functioning coaching, right? Those three areas are really the, the trinity of special ed. Regardless of your label, those three things are generally the most impacted. Um, executive functioning, reading, reading and writing, and mathematics, right? You, no one has a science or social studies disability. It's typically, I don't read or write well, or I don't calculate well, and that impacts my ability to, right? And then on the other side, I would look at it in terms of behavior, but not in the class, more in terms of those, um, school, it, it would incorporate that emotional, social, behavioral side of the dime to coach teachers in the classroom. You know, what happens now most often when you have a student who's having difficulties on, in that domain, is they get sent somewhere else. Go to the school psychologist, go to the school counselor, go to the principal. The problem is, behavior doesn't change when I'm sitting in the psychologist's office. Behavior changes when I work with my teacher to change that behavior. So that kind of coaching, I think, could be really helpful. Sometimes teachers with all the best intentions actually till the soil for behavior to occur more frequently. And I don't mean bad beha-, you know, I don't, I don't just mean be acting out. I mean, um, disengaged behavior. All, you know, when I say behavior, I think about anything that could negatively impact learning of myself and others, right? So I think a coaching model at all of the buildings that looks at both sides of that, of, you know, the expertise in teaching kids who don't learn the way everybody else does, and expertise in helping people create environments that support those kids, I think would be very helpful.
So those coaches you're envisioning would work with all certified staff?
Right, they would be working with special education staff, but they would also be, could work with general ed teachers who are having, who are struggling to reach a student with a disability who might be in their class. I mean, it would be really a building-wide resource and support.
Would there be an expectation if we were to do that, that we would be able to move more students out of the realm of special ed into mainstream?
I would think we could even prevent kids from being brought into special ed.
Or whatever, I mean, would, clearly would have to be some positive or some benefit of making that investment. So the question is, how would we, what would the expectation be? And you don't have to ask that now, but you do think, you think of, but if we were to bring that forward as, as a real proposal, then we would need to see what would the expectation be for IED prevention of, of children moved along under the special ed and realm, or the ability to move kids out of that and into the mainstream. So, whatever.
Yeah, I, I would look at, uh, prevention certainly as a piece of that in collaboration with the coaches working in reading and writing. I don't, would also look at overall student achievement of students with disabilities. You might not be able to prevent. I mean, there are students who have disabilities. We're gonna have them, they're gonna be here. But we might be able to raise the level of achievement, which I think if you look at overall achievement, if we wanna move the dime on achievement in Wilton, a good investment is, is working on improving instruction at the ground level for children with disabilities, because-
That makes sense.
Right, so I think we'd have to come up with a metric that didn't just look at, do we keep kids from ever being disabled? Because there are kids who are, who, who have disabilities that are more neurobiologically based, that aren't caused by lack of instruction, that are caused by neurobiology. So I think those are kinds of the things that we would have to look at what that metric would look like, similar to what the metric would look like for. And that would be kind of a three-to-five-year investment. You wouldn't see the results over, you know, one physical cycle. You'd have to really give it some time to build, create, and then see some results start to go from there.
Okay, is there anything else for Chuck?
Could I very quickly do two things that aren't necessarily reflected in my budget, but questions that you've asked? You asked a lot about ELL.
Yes.
So I do have that information for you.
Oh, great.
Um, what I've done is I've broken down, um, student by language area across the years so that you can see the increase in the number of students that we have, and what languages that they're speaking. Also on the back, there's a Q and A here. Um, how severe are the needs of the students being seen? How's the, how's this changed recently? What is the impact of the change in the law on the number of eligible students? What is not getting done when the caseload increases to the current levels? Some other considerations. And then there was a question around the Title III funding. So this is just for your information so that you can go through it.
Right, thank you.
Okay. The other thing I, I wanted to talk to you just very briefly about was interventions. Some of this we have gone through, I think. Caseloads. So generally speaking, in ELA, our academic interventions have between twenty and thirty students. Um, in math, it is between thirty and forty students. We also have-
Can you, I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Sure. In ELA, the, uh, caseloads range between twenty and thirty students. In math, it's between thirty and forty students. And what that means is that the groups that they're working with, the math teachers are much larger than the groups they're working with in ELA. There was also a question about approximately how many students are not receiving math intervention that should be receiving intervention? So just take a deep breath. It's about six hundred and eighty students who fall through twelve grades that are not receiving intervention.
Six hundred and eighty?
Yes.
Students in both areas or?
No, in math.
Services aren't getting them.
Because remember-
So that, those are the test core, the test cut?
Yes, yes. So we are able to service kids up to the fortieth percentile with one interventionist per building. These numbers are students who fall between the fortieth and the sixtieth percentile because sixtieth percentile corresponds to being on grade level in math. So I was just thinking through this, even if we were to add one more math interventionist at each building, that's only gonna be about a hundred and twenty kids. So I think what we might wanna explore is the model that Lauren has put into place at Middlebrook, the AIM program. It's more of a large group intervention, kind of a, uh, additional tier-one instruction, but we could service many more kids through that model than we would through the traditional intervention.
Okay, so, and they would be like the fifty, sixty percentile kids in that class?
Forty to sixty.
Forty, forty, sixty. I thought you said forty was included in your interventions now?
Up to forty. So it's actually forty-one to sixty-one. We are not seeing these students.
Oh.
Zach, I, I had had some conversation with Kevin a short while ago about our schedule and how a day is broken. And if we have identified students in math who need help, then why aren't they, how could we schedule them for an hour and a half every day versus the forty minutes a day? Okay? And since the high school, I mean, if you have, you have, scheduling is a complex, complicated, and impossible area. I mean, it's really difficult, the high school, it's very difficult. But why do we insist on having the forty-minute classroom in Middlebrook, three days a week, you have this, you have math five days a week if you have needs, and it's an hour and a half a day, that you're in there and you're getting, until you get the permission to learn, next year is difficult. But I, 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 without seeing, without having to have interventionists, just modify our schedule so the student has that level, that concentration and the frequency and, and, and commit and the time devoted to it, as opposed to hot, having interventionists. Is there a way of, I just thought it's hard to think about. I don't need an answer.
I am not a, a high school scheduling expert, but there is-
Or Middlebrook scheduling expert, or whatever. I, I understand.
We do have a model for science, where kids get the regular classroom plus a lab. I don't know if that's something that we could think about for math, but there's only certain amount of minutes per day in the-
Yeah, that's the one thing that hasn't changed in a hundred years.
Well, that's what I raised, I raised that question for, that we're doing exactly the same thing we did in our scheduling, our breakdown of eight years a day that I had fifty years ago. And the world's changed, needs have changed, how, you know, how we teach has changed dramatically, and it's time to, I think the bullet all up and look at it with a fresh set of eyes, maybe, that's not, either here or there.
I mean, the current AIM program right now has that ability where it's during the day, but then there's a before-school and an after-school help that they can go to.
Through flex time.
So that's sort of a additional time that you can add to, that's sort of what you're talking about.
And making some, um, hard choices. Intervention, I think one of the biggest struggles our building administrators have is that we have to make choices. If we have a student who's below grade level in reading and math, I'm not so sure, number one, writing is a priority. I'm not so sure world language is a priority. Social studies and science, particularly at the elementary level, is an area that I'm not so sure is a priority. Parents and teachers and administrators at the building level have a very hard time making those hard choices because they want it all.
Not simply that.
But with some kids, even at the high school level, we might have to make some tough choices about what our priorities are.
Well, I think at the high school, it would actually, I don't wanna say easy, cause it's not easy. But given the course loads and the free periods and all of that, you might be able to carve out a period for an AIM type of program. Probably the bigger challenge would be at the elementary schools. But I, but I do think that larger group is, is a good idea, and Gretchen's point about before and after school. How about the summer? And again, some of these may not be mandatable or whatever, but if there, yeah, there's at least support available those, cause there are other time periods besides the traditional hours of school day.
So Chuck, what were the things you wanted to add but you couldn't?
Um, I, I think we need another ELL teacher. I really do. The needs-
ELL teacher?
Yes.
The teacher in, uh, all schools or a curriculum person or?
Well, they, we shared, uh, we have one teacher who services all four schools.
Where is that teacher located?
I believe she's located at Cider Mill right now, but she travels to all four schools.
And she could use a second, and, but-
Second full-time?
Yes.
But high school, Bob was saying yesterday, he has an offset to Norwalk. How does that work?
Um, what is that offset for? I'm not quite sure.
Oh, that's the adult ed.
That's the adult ed.
Yeah, it's, it's the mandated literacy program for students who didn't-
So our high school kids are taking it?
It's not our high school kids, it's kids who, um, either dropped out or didn't take it to high school, and they're still age-eligible.
So the high school kids are educated through our one person that's located, that one person has the whole district?
Yes.
Okay.
And simply the needs of the students have, I mean, the numbers have increased, but the needs of the students.
Yeah, just skimming over.
Right.
That person reports directly to you, that ELL teacher?
Um, I don't evaluate her, but I do kind of oversee the program, yes.
But who is that now?
Ellen Murphy.
How many languages does she, like, how does she do that?
Uh, it's hard.
Yeah, but I mean, she can't-
It's not a bilingual program.
She's not a polygraph, right?
It's not a bilingual program, it's an ELL program, so it's about teaching-
English.
English.
English as a second language, so it, you don't need to speak Mandarin. You need to start, you need to get in in speaking English and then understanding. I think the challenge for one person across a K-12 continuum is the teaching of English as a second language to a five or six-year-old is profoundly different than teaching academic English to a high schooler who's also trying to get a high school diploma. Those two skill sets are profoundly different. So I think that's, you know, that's part of the problem with having one person stretched so thin, um, in terms of teaching English to a, to a person who's not a native speaker of English.
How does she do it now, Chuck, Ellen? I mean, does she do, like, does she get all these kids together in one, in one group? Or does she do it one-on-one? How does she do it?
It really, because, remember, remember that the kids come at different times. So she's got newcomers versus kids who are close to proficiency.
Right, right, of course. Right.
She tries to group by need.
Okay.
The biggest challenge for her is the schedule differences between the different buildings. So if you have a, for instance, I was observing her working with a student of, um, Asian background at the high school, and, um, she needs help in a particular subject area, but Ellen can't always be there during the time that that subject is being taught because of her other commitments in the other schools. It would be better if we had an elementary person and a secondary person, and that they could, it's easier to coordinate between Middlebrook and the high school than it is between the high school and Miller Driscoll.
What would the cost of adding another FTE for that position?
What is it about?
A hundred, let's figure it a bit better.
So she's a one, she's a full-time, she's full-time?
Yes.
And that was on your, your tiered list, right, in the district?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I think it's, when you look at the, um, just kind of the change over time, I mean, this is a, it's a very recent change in the last couple of years.
It's doubled since two thousand thirteen.
It has.
And when you look at, like, we have a whole family of students from Syria, so they have language needs, but they have incredible emotional needs and gaps in their education, so I, I just want you to understand, it's not just the numbers, the intensity of the needs of the students we're getting now is much greater.
Okay, um, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Especially, I'm glad we spent a lot of time on the coaching, because I think, you know, to Debbie's point, that is an area where we hear a lot of, um, questions and pushback from the community, so the more we can educate the community about it, I think the better off we'll be. So thank you for spending that time with us, people. And now we're going to move on to the district.
Sure, this is probably the, the least interesting portion of the entire budget. Just a couple of, I've been waiting for an hour to share some good news that Marianne and I discovered this morning. But just as a note of change, um, so this past year, we broke out this budget to try to reveal more detail by office. So in the past, finance, HR, those were all picked up kind of in one central office superintendent's budget. So what you're looking at here, we have, you know, my, specifically my office, we have a back page that details the costs in our human resources department. Costs, we broke out the business office, and then, as we have in the past, you also have a page for transportation and a page specifically for benefits, so you can see what those costs are. If we begin with the page, it's object forty, central office superintendent. I'll start with the good news, because I picked this up this morning, so if you look at my salary line.
What page are you on?
I'm on, uh, it's the, uh, page, it's, the title is central office superintendent, it's one of the eight and a half by fourteen pages right after Chuck's instructional program improvement page.
Got it.
So, yeah, that's what I said, wow. So I went to, to Marianne and asked her about this, and that, there's twenty thousand dollars in there that needs to come out. So we just found twenty thousand dollars, and what she had picked up that hadn't been captured in previous budgets, in my old contract, there was a provision for a merit bonus of twenty.
Right.
She carried, she wrote that in, so we're, we're taking that out, so that number, so we, we just found twenty thousand dollars, right? It's the first time that's happened in three days, I think, so you're welcome.
Could anyone comment about your huge influence on self?
No, no, not, not at all. And then, um, so just some of the other items that I would just call out for you that are here on this page. So under the contract services lines, you see a proposed budget of sixty thousand dollars. You, if you look at the year-over-year change, that's because we, we broke those cost, those other costs out into different departments where they actually belong. So specific to my office, we have things like the cost of paying a hearing officer to oversee expulsion cases. We have the cost of the shredding contract embedded in there. We also have the cost of the, um, another study that we're engaged in around early reading and students with learning difficulties with district management council. So this is a, a follow-up to the study we did a couple of years. The cost this year for us is thirty-five, we broke that over two years, so we paid a portion in this budget year, we're paying a portion in the next budget year. Cablevision is also wrapped up in that. And the other line that I think just stands out proportionally is the membership dues line. And so, um, we belong to CAPE, and that cost is pretty substantial, it's nineteen thousand four hundred for the year. It is, yeah.
Wow.
It's, and, you know, other districts are questioning the return on investment there. CES is the next largest proportion, that's twenty-two thousand. And then, um, CAFS is forty-five hundred annually, and NSDEC is five thousand. And then, you see, we broke out legal fees, those, those numbers used to be combined, so we broke that out into sped and non-sped. So the other portion of legal fees is picked up in the special services budget.
So the legal fees that are shown here have nothing to do with special ed?
No, these are non-special ed legal fees, correct. So general counsel, contract.
Versus defense.
Correct, sure.
Can you comment on the DMC study?
Yeah, we are, as you know, we went back, uh, we conducted a pretty comprehensive review of the services we provide to struggling students. We made some changes as a result, so we implemented an SRBI program, we went back and looked at scheduling. We got some good recommendations from DMC around reading, we've been implementing a, a reading model. We recently got the validation about the quality of the model from the tri-state consortium. And so now we are looking at fidelity of implementation of that model and how we're using additional human resources to support reading acquisition for struggling learners. So we're looking at distribution of paraprofessional time, distribution of teacher time through the reading block because we want to ensure consistency across classrooms. You know, that's what Chuck did in common before, but part of the reason that we're using coaching is because our understanding is there's greater variability in quality of instruction across classrooms within a building than across buildings. And so part of our goal is to ensure that there's little variability and it's high quality all the way through.
We're also looking at the scheduling of special education and special services staff. So how are we, what, what are the decision-making structures being used at each building level? Right now, we're focusing in on, on the K-five. We'll get to the six-twelve, but right now, we're focusing in on K-five to think about, are we, are we deploying our human resources the most effectively to meet the needs of the kids and in a fiscally responsible manner? So that's a piece of the, of what, so I wouldn't call what we're doing now another study, we're not doing another study. Now we're doing some active intervention about how we schedule staff, how do we utilize the resources we have. It'll also look at some of the area standards for staffing, um, when you get, when I start my routine.
So I think we have to be careful there to say that we're not having DMC to come back and do another study, we're using them as consulting.
Yeah, it's, it's not a redo of what we had done in the past. I mean, we had implemented some changes, and we're following up on those changes to continue the, the work going forward.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not, I mean, the, the price tag of that original study was somewhere in the order of two hundred thousand dollars, this is nowhere near that.
It's just the wording in the budget says second half of DMC study, I just wonder if you could just be politically more sensitive?
I think that this is kind of progress monitoring.
Yeah, sure, we, so just kind of rephrase that, you got it.
Well, if it's really about implementation or carrying through on the recommendations, that's different than another study that will,
Yeah.
which we didn't do anything with the first one, what are you doing another one?
Right, yeah, which is not it at all.
Just want to clarify that.
Yep, okay.
And I think another important point is the restructuring of the IEPs.
Well, we're not-
That sort of came from-
IEPs are developed by a specific peo-, I, I just, for the television viewing audience. IEPs are developed by a team of individuals, about one kid at a time. The DMC study, or, or, I won't call it a study, the DMC work that we're going to be, we're kind of, the work we're working on as a department is to look at how do we make decisions about, you know, how, from the, from the evaluation to the plan, to its implementation, to its assessment. We're really looking at the whole cycle of special education and, and getting to a point where, where our staff are at the top of their game in terms of the evaluation itself. Then taking that evaluation and developing specific targeted plans. And then implementing those plans and progress monitoring and communicating all of that information so that the family is a part of the process. That's the piece of the puzzle that we have to use. The part that, that DMC is helping us facilitate right now is really how do we move from the individual planning and placement team meeting to looking at all of the students we have and utilizing our, our human resources the most effectively? That's what they're going to help us with in that overall process. Does that make sense? So similar to what Chuck said about the ELL teacher tries to group students by need. Right now, we're going to focus on, on K-five. Often, there are other decision-making structures that are at play that have nothing to do with student need. So it's at Cider Mill, the house system, we, we process by house. So you might have kids in two different houses with a similar need who aren't necessarily grouped together for instruction. Part of this work will be to push against all those current decision-making structures and say, are we utilizing our human resources to benefit the students and be fiscally responsible? Does that make sense?
Yeah, but what I was getting at was, didn't DMC have a specific recommendation on how to make the process for building the meeting more efficient?
Yes, they did.
Thank you.
And the frequency of the PPT, you know, they're, we're working on that and have, have become more efficient, we still have way more work to do in that area.
Their recommendation was to look at it, they didn't say do X, Y, Z to make it better.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And there ha-, there has been work, Sharon and, and Ann before me did work, and there are certain things that have happened that have resulted in more, but we still have a long way to go. You know, my work, my listening tour with the parents and community has revealed some things about the perception of people coming to those meetings. The meetings aren't always efficient and effective. We often have more meetings than we need to have because parents leave feeling perhaps unheard. So we need to work on some, some skill sets on in that, so.
Great.
I don't want to take Kevin's time, but.
It's all one pot.
It's all, it's all one pot, right. But there was, um, I didn't have any other notes that, or mentioning on that page.
Okay.
So we can, if you want to look at the, um, the next page is the human resources summary page. You can see as you look down those lines, the vast majority of dollars committed in human resources is tied up in salaries. The next larger lines, yeah, would be the contracted services around computers, and those are the software systems we use. Aesop is our staff reporting system, Appletrack is our, um, the new recruit applicant management system. And then the other, the third one is a program called Bib that we bought last year, and that's just a supplemental background screening system that we use for prospective employees, and we're actually going to be expanding that to volunteers. And then moving along, um, the next summary sheet is the finance department. And I would say, you know, Ann can speak to this, but, you know, again, primarily salaries. There are some larger lines in contracted services, computer and service agreements. Those are programs we use, like Ceridian, Bankroll fees, what else is in there?
OmniGroup, Visions, um, Infinite Vision, and our payroll.
Yeah, so just the, the software accounting systems we use, and, and we'll see a change when we move over to New World.
When we move over to New World, Ceridian will go away, I believe that Ceridian's about a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
So the majority of that will go away once we shift into the new system.
We'll share that.
And that's happening in JY?
Yes.
We'll be allocated costs from the town for that.
There'll be a maintenance cost, we'd, yeah, I'm trying to get a-
Shared with town.
Yeah.
I, I just pointed out to you, I, on the page seven, it's, this is your big miss there, huh, this roll in in total?
No, this is the one that rolls in, which is correct, this one doesn't. So I'll make sure that that write-up sheet is correct. Yeah, it's the, the formula on the, um-
So page seven, which one is it?
Uh, page seven is the payroll, uh, fees.
Yeah, just-
You'll see a hundred seventy-five as a general error there, but this is the page that, uh, posts them.
Big page roll.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
Ann, are we doing anything to fix the current issue with our systems that don't talk to each other?
Uh, I, actually, I just had a conversation with Eric yesterday on how to start mirroring them together, so we have access on it. We did have a couple of people, are you talking about our access right now that they have to, um, New World, the, the staff? Um, we have one staff member downstairs now that is on New World, but we're looking to do it a different way when we actually go up and running so that they're on their, each of their servers and then do a, um, virtual server. And, uh, there's two reasons for that, is, is, one is the connectivity of it, to keep the ease of connectivity on it, and also the separation, um, for security reasons. So that the town can't get into the board event, and the board event can't get into its town. So that's actually the, uh, better method to use. So we have to then bring both IT sides together now and go through it.
Okay.
Yeah, and then in terms of our legacy systems, I think actually Richard was providing some input and consulting on how we can get better communication between Ceridian and Infinite Vision. So, I mean, we're going to limp along as we have until we make a full conversion, which will take, you know, probably a year and a half, two years to really complete a full conversion. And then, can, just proceeding through the remaining pages here, transportation is fairly straightforward. And a lot of these dollars are tied up in our contract with STA. We did know, as a result of going out to bid for out-of-district transportation, those costs actually came down, drove down the, prevented the, the, the overall bottom line from increasing more substantially.
And we check, yeah, I think we're in the first year of a new contract now, are we not, for our bus, for our bill of insurance?
First year of five, yeah, it's a five-year contract.
So these numbers should be relatively stable over the next, you know, three or four years, whoever.
Yeah.
Reciting this, but not, you know.
Yeah, I think, you know, to Mary Channing as well, I mean, she really held the STA's feet to the fire and ensuring that we had the latest and greatest in terms of the fleet.
You know, I'm on a, um, a board chair with her, where districts pose questions to each other and see just get feedback from other people. And, um, bus transportation is, is currently a raging topic because of the districts that have had to bid out their transportation this year. They're just blown away by the, the prices they're getting, fifteen percent increases, eighteen percent increases. One district, I forget which, is thinking of buying their bus fleet.
I think they're two-owner operator in the state that I'm aware of.
I, yeah.
We are low, I think in the DIRG, I think our costs are probably the lowest if not.
We looked at that a year ago.
Yeah, we are right down to the rock bottom of our, our normal transportation costs.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a good, a good relationship with STA.
I do wonder, moving down the road, if there is some way of regionalizing contracts or services on buses. It just seems logical, if you had a bigger pool to bid against, that might bring some prices down.
I agree with you, intuitively, it makes sense.
Yeah, and I, and I get every district scheduled differently and yada, 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 but still, if there is some way of pooling together, even though there are some differences maybe bus companies would trim the costs a little bit. Right? And then my other thing on special, on transportation is the special ed transportation costs are
Million dollars.
outstandingly high, and not because that's wrong, it's just a lot of money.
It is.
It's a million, yeah, exactly.
Good million dollars a year for the last, every year for the last four, five years.
Yeah, I'm not saying that there is a trend one way or the other, it's just an astounding amount of money.
It is, it's, it's right.
It is, true.
The, the last portion of this budget is just a breakout of the employee benefits and insurance. You can see, um, that modest reduction in OPEB costs, some other very minor reductions, and workers' comp and things like that. But as was noted in the formal presentation, you know, this is essentially a good news line in our budget because we held it.
We held a line for four years ago, I mean, it's pretty remarkable. Our experience has been good, it's driven by experience, and it's really was very, I don't know, wood.
Right, right. And among those various cost numbers, there's no wish list, you know.
Can, um, we, so, go back to, um,
Sure, what page is it?
To, um, well, actually, let me ask you, but I wanted to ask you about administrator staffing in each building. Um, I've heard pretty much each of your building principals say that they have the administrative team they need and that they couldn't imagine reducing. Can you sort of comment on that from a, from a big picture?
I agree, and I think, you know, what sometimes gets lost in the conversation when you're just looking at numbers, I can say a couple of things. So I'll update my comparisons, but I've done some initial, bless you, some initial comparisons last year. And Wilton is not out of sync with DIRG communities, and so I think that's important to know. But I think what gets lost sometimes when we're talking about numbers of administrators, number one, the demands of the job. And so just, you know, we could tick off a list as long as my arm about the things that they're required to do that take significant amounts of time. So things like IEP meetings, you know, we have, in this district, we have a lot of them, and they all take an hour or more. And we, beyond that, our administrators have substantial demands on their time tied to the supervision of teaching and learning. So they're, they all have large caseloads. So they're, they all have large caseloads, and each of those caseloads require X amount of hours to fulfill the obligation of just compliance supervision, not even the additional coaching and support that really is the most important part of their job. And then the rest of that time is filled with responding to ad hoc teacher needs, of which there is no end, and then parent needs and kid needs. And so they're responding to discipline concerns, family concerns. And then, you know, the, I guess the last portion of that is the time that they spend working collaboratively around, you know, driving some of the building priorities and the district priorities forward. So so that's my long-winded way of saying, every minute of their time is accounted for. And I think when we look at where the needs are administratively, within the buildings, you know, I take someone like Lauren Feltz who said repeatedly, she cannot imagine writing with one fewer dean. And we've talked about that. In fact, you know, we had one of our deans that was hired most recently on a provisional contract a couple of years ago with the understanding that we were going to reevaluate this position because we were looking at possibly reducing. We looked similarly at Miller Driscoll, you know, what would life be like? And I think what's also important to understand is everyone in this community, parents, students, teachers, have an expectation around a high quality of service, and I think that's important. You heard Bob speak to that a little bit yesterday. And as a people industry, we can't provide the service without the people, you know, and that's really what it comes down to. And so we need the administrative staff to work with the teachers and parents to make decisions, to work together, to drive the district forward. And, you know, despite the entreaties I heard from folks like, you know, Chris Stroup a couple of years ago, we have not yet, and it's not for lack of, you know, investigation, found a way to operate this district effectively in a way where we could do it with fewer folks. In fact, I think the contrary is true. You know, we have a gaping need in special services. You know, where some years ago, it's my understanding that we had a, an elementary supervisor and a secondary supervisor. And that secondary supervisor, I think, was cut at some point as a result of a budget contraction. The folks at the high school and, you know, to a lesser extent at Middlebrook need additional supervisory support in special services that they're not getting because we have one Andrea and one Sharon. And they're just, they're they're flat out.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, Andrea, Sharon, it's your turn.
Okay, so special services. I will tell you that this was a, this was quite a challenge, coming in in July and being prepared to go forward with a budget was very challenging. Understanding the budget, understanding the cost centers and how budgeting is done here was extraordinarily challenging. So I I say to you that this budget was done in the best way that we could do it under those circumstances, but I will guarantee you there will be a very different methodology looking at, at planning for the eighteen nineteen budget. And part of that methodology will be coming before, or present, or whether I come before the board or share with the board some staffing standards that hopefully will be supported by the board to understand how staffing is determined, because I can't, I can't find a way that decisions are made about what staffing is necessary and how those decisions are determined. And so that's first and foremost on my mind in terms of developing some guiding principles for staffing special education and then also some standards for all of special education, special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, both what a building needs to run, a building of a thousand students needs, and then also how do we make decisions for those very, very complex students that may need, may have more compelling needs that we have to address.
But aren't these standards that you would have already done in Fairfield?
We had staffing standards in Fairfield, we did.
Wouldn't they just apply here as well, or?
Well.
Like, you know, building of X number of kids, I mean, is there a formula that you've come up with?
I think, I think that the process will be working with all the constituents to understand how we make decisions. So it's, it'll start with a set, you know, developing those standards in Fairfield was a process, right? We developed a set of guiding.
Something that was done elsewhere and say, make it work here. You want it to be built from the bottom up?
I think I'd probably be, you know.
Run out of town.
Yeah, run out of town if I didn't take into account what's different about Wilton compared to.
Okay.
So, you know, part of the process is developing a set of guiding principles
Yes.
about budgeting for special services, because it's, it's different from, say, budgeting classroom teachers. You can do that strictly on a numbers basis, but special ed services has to look at both numbers and the in, the kids, the complexity of the need. Because a lot, you can line up a hundred students with special needs and all you have is a hundred students with special needs. Right? So, and in any given year, a school could need more support in, in line A and less in line B, but it should be driven by some numbers and then complexity, but that should be, that should be something I can articulate to you as well. We did this because there's a, a complex student who's going to be here for three years and then there for three years, and then, and it should follow, those supports should follow a student.
So the services follow the kids. So if you have a cohort of students with autism in grade three, then whatever.
You would expect when they get to grade five, six transition, you're going to see some movement of resources.
Right, exactly. So they don't just stay at grade three when the incoming next grade three doesn't have that same level of cohort.
Right. And you heard Jen comment on that the other day, where there's been a, a history of the staff not following the kids.
And I think that part of the process is understanding what does a building the size of Cider Mill need to run? And then when you have a student with a very complex needs or a small group of students with complex needs, how, how do you see that movement moving forward? As lo- as well as increased independence, young children are less independent than older children because we teach them to be more independent. And so that I don't see. I see everybody has the same amount of service every year. And so I think there needs to be some more transparency there. So that will be a part of that discussion that we'll talk about theoretically, and then you'll see the evidence of that as we plan for the eighteen nineteen. So what you see here is, is an attempt to move forward. The focus of my attention is really on professional learning, and you see that both in the additional time to bring some staff together to do this work, to be a part of the work, as well as in the professional development. I have three focus areas in professional development. One is reading instructions. So you'll see that we're continuing our work with our special education teachers in terms of structured literacy teaching. That is a big ticket item. We're also looking at comprehensive evaluations, as I talked about earlier, in in the kind of work we have to do. The most important thing we do before we can plan for what a student needs is to understand who they are as a learner, where their strengths are, where their weaknesses are, and what neuropathways we can use to mitigate those weaknesses. And so we need to do some work with our staff on, on sharpening their toolbox in terms of comprehensive evaluations. What I am proposing we do is that we identify one school psychologist at each level next year and have them move forward toward national certification as a school neuropsychologist to up their game. And to do that each of the next couple of years, that is both, that's an, there's a national online support. It's both online and classroom work, so it's about five thousand dollars per staff member to reach that level of training. I have used it before, and I will tell you it is transformative in terms of the, both the, more the interpretation of the testing that really drives teacher planning and instruction. And so that's a piece I'd like to see us work on.
Psychiatrists would earn another level.
Psychologists?
Psychologists would earn another level of certification.
Yes, they would expand their current practice, but really it's about fine tuning their skill set in the interpretation and then communication of what are those neuropathways that lead to a student gaining an achievement.
Does that then bump them to another salary?
No. There's still a school psychologist in the district. It doesn't, it's not a doctoral program, it's a certification program.
Would that decrease the amount of neuropsych we'd have to pay for independently?
I would like to think it would, because we could recommend neuropsycholo- neuropsychological assessments right here in district. The number of neuropsychological evaluations we're doing right now, I think, is is part and parcel of a bigger issue. It's really more related to parents requesting independent educational evaluations, and that's a part of this building trusting relationships with parents so that they understand that our staff have the capacity to, to expand their knowledge base. So I think it, it may, but I can't, I can't count it as a one-to-one yet until we see the outcome of some of the other work we're doing. Does that make sense?
For IEPs, is there a threshold that, or some way of measuring student performance that would supersede a parent? Or do we have to, if a parent comes and requests an IEP, we have to automatically do it? Or do we respond? So there are thresholds that
Yes.
if a student's performing at a certain level, there's, and we are, how are we rigorous in our denial of requests for IEPs, as rigorous as we could be or need, should be?
Based on my initial look, I mean, I'm doing, right now I'm doing basically random studies. I pull random files and review the processes for those kids, both kids who have been identified and kids who have not been identified. What I'm finding is there are cases where students should have been identified who weren't, and cases of students who have been identified who are no more disabled than I. And so that's a piece of tightening up this understanding of where those thresholds are. And also tightening up, and and I don't mean to say that because the stu- the staff isn't doing good work. They're doing great work. They're working hard and they're doing great work, but we're also in this, in this time where there are issues happening across the district that are, where, so some of the SRBI, for example, that's really just getting into full bloom, we're going to start to see and are seeing differences at the elementary level. Because their SRBI programs are faithful, they're being implemented with fidelity, we're seeing growth and development. So over the next few years, we're going to see things happening there in terms of special education. We also have a lot of work to do at the six through twelve level, that continuum of service, because we're seeing students there who are struggling to, struggling to keep up with all the demands placed on them and are having difficulty. And when that happens, when a parent sees a child having difficulty, and they don't feel their child's needs are being met, they often look to special ed or 504 for that matter, because then they have a law behind them. So we've got a lot of work to do in the six to twelve continuum to meet the needs of students in general education. We also have to do a lot of work, what we've talked about in terms of the anxiety, the depression, the the overwhelming sense that students are experiencing, a feeling unable to meet the standards that are being set before them. So we have to balance both things. But I do think we have some instances where we've made some mistakes in identification, both ways. Saying a child is disabled when they're not is equally tragic to saying a child has, doesn't have a disability when they do. Both are tragic.
The latter will come back to bite us at some point.
Yeah, yeah, the latter will.
So, I would say that. So from a, so the professional development, I think, is critical. The third area of professional development is really looking at that social, emotional, learning and behavioral side. I've put in funding here to have two, this is, this is a, an outside coaching process. It's not the instructional behavioral. This is looking at the collaborative problem-solving models of Ross Green. You can look him up, but I can, he wrote a book called Lost in School, which really helps to work with teachers and school people to understand what are the lagging skills and unsolved problems that till the soil for those behaviors to occur? And how do we help kids teach the skills and solve the problems? And how do we do that with the student? And so I put in funding to have two teams of ten. This will be Middlebrook and the high school. To, what I'm looking for are five general education teachers and five special services staff who will work with, on a monthly basis, doing some virtual consultation. So they will be asked to work with real kids, then they will present to, for clinical consultation with the team at collaborative problem solving and get some, some skill set development on how to help change those behaviors. And then hopefully we'll be able to transform some of those kids and get some buy-in from teachers that, that they really can make a difference for those kids and not need, you know, a para to work on, or, or an outplacement to get a student more motivated or engaged in the learning process. So those are the three areas of professional development.
Do just five general ed teachers versus?
It's a funding issue. I know. It's about seven thousand dollars for a team of ten.
But they're not going to be able to then come back and help coach or teach the teacher in the classroom next to them what they just learned, right?
Well.
So you just hope that maybe each year you can do another five, another five, another five? Is that what you're hoping?
In this process, what you start to build is momentum. So you start to build a different thinking structure on the part of those ten people. The basic premise of this work is that students do well when they can. So students aren't, who aren't doing well have lagging skills and unsolved problems. Typically, in, particularly at the secondary level, we view student behavior as volitional, that kids are being bad, they're choosing to be bad. This changes that mindset, and it starts to build a cadre of people who look at, if a child's not doing well in a class, they're either disengaged or not doing their work or, or behaving badly. It's not because they're doing, they're, they're volitional, it's because they have lagging skills and unsolved problems. So as the teacher, I can teach lagging skills and I can partner with a student to solve problems and solve the problem that might be generating or telling the soil for that behavior to occur. Right? It's a, it's a, it's a thought process. So getting a team that's starting to think that way starts to build momentum, and then you, then you gain traction in making changes. It can profoundly affect school climate. It can profoundly affect the relationship between teacher and student because it, it, the teacher is validating what the student is, experiences and saying, I can teach you that skill and you and I together can solve that problem. So you don't need to behave your way out. So that's the mindset you want to try to build, and that changes things dramatically.
Just looking for five volunteers, or will you select who you think you want to be the first five?
On the ground who are, we're going to do, right this year, we're going to do a little book club. So we're going to read Lost in School together and generate some interest in people who will want to participate with us. I, I always like to look for.
Doesn't have to be a math teacher versus an ELO.
My girl is. I want people who are, I like some people who are early adopters who jump right in. I also want a couple of naysayers.
Okay.
I want a couple of, yeah, not me
Yep.
to come on board and try something new.
Good, okay.
And then, you know, see if you can start to change some of that thinking.
Good.
So that's, those are three big tickets in, you'll see, in the increase in professional development. That's where that money's earmarked for.
Yeah, and, um, correct my, if, because, you know, when you're talking, you're talking about a teacher working with a student. But working with that student is going to improve the envi- environment of the entire classroom, so every student in that classroom is going to benefit from that. I've seen that anxiety because, you know, I have a child that comes home and is like, you know, Mrs. Smith is having a hard time with, sorry, Smith's.
They are.
Because. Little Andre Lee Darni, it's having a little.
So it's, you know, right, so it's, I mean, I just want to clarify that, that this is not just benefiting one child, it's benefiting all the children.
And when I say behavior, behavior can be both internalized, like the student who's sitting in the back of them with their head down.
Yeah, yeah.
And the externalized behavior who might, that might be explosive.
Absolutely, yes.
It could be the student who's choosing not to do any work, or who, when independent work happens, doesn't get to business.
Yeah.
It really is, and it could be a teacher who's having trouble getting to a whole class, like things just aren't gelling well. How can you approach lagging skills and unsolved problems as a different mindset? How can you approach lagging skills and unsolved problems as a different mindset to these kids are just behaving badly?
Well, every year, every class is different. So you have a teacher who, it doesn't matter what here or his skillset is. They can have a, you know, makeup of a class that challenges them and it creates new situations.
Lagging skills, unsolved problems.
And what line item is this PD in?
It's in the professional development law, and it's both in, um, the additional timeline. There's some money there for some summer work with us.
Okay.
But it's also in the, I'm gonna find it.
First one on the second page?
It's, there's some of it that's in the, the, um, collaborative problem solving, is some in the consultant line, because that's a consultative coaching. There's some money in there.
Uh-huh.
Um, and then there's money in the professional development line.
Where's the professional development?
Training and conferences at the top of the page.
That second page, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's where that bump in money, so it's
So there's three PD things you have spread out over those accounts?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, in terms of, you know, work that needs to be done, you know, you've heard me on the coaching and you've heard Kevin, I can't reiterate enough. I think that the families, what we expect of building principals in the district, they, they can't possibly have the level of expertise necessary to work with families and teams and all the complex students with disabilities. We, um, the secondary schools need more technical assistance and administrative support. Um, you know, you talked about the, the administrator going in to do quality evaluation and supervision with a, yeah, with a teacher of a world language and they don't understand the language that's being taught. Well, there are very few people who really understand the level necessary the federal law, the state regulations, how that all plays a part. Um, and that impacts a lot of your budget in terms of legal fees, in terms of um, the number of families who feel like they can't participate in the process without lawyers and advocates present. Um, that, those are indicators that, that they don't always feel like they're being heard at the ground level. Sharon, D'Angelo, the end of the table, and myself can't possibly attend enough PPTs. And there isn't enough training time in the world to get the principals to have the same level of knowledge and experience that she and I have, having done this for thirty years. So, well, she hasn't done it for thirty years. She's twelve years old, but but, you know, she is, you know, and she worked, she's working with teams on the ground and she's doing her best, but she is stretched far too thin. Um, I'm amazed at the work she's able to accomplish. She is stretched far too thin um, to be able to really gain traction, particularly at the secondary level. Um, I think both Miller Driscoll and Cider Mill would benefit from having her more. Um, and, and, um, day to day, those, our six to twelve continuum really needs support.
So I know you wanted a second Sharon, but that's not in this.
It didn't make it through the, the cuts, but I, I will continue to sing that song.
But that would be your number one request if you got more money? Would that be your number one request? It's not on our tiers.
It's not in the tiers, because, you know, I'm gonna err on the side of direct service to kids more than I'm gonna err on the side of that. But I think we could improve direct service to kids with that coordination.
Do money well spent.
It would be money very, very well spent.
And I would say, I just wanna point out that this is how, when we went to Fairfield to talk to the staff when Andrea was still in the hiring process, we spoke to them, and this is, that's the model that she had set up over time in Fairfield. So it's a model that she is accustomed to and has proven to work.
But, you know, I think Fairfield's bigger, right? In Fairfield, I had five coordinators. I'm not looking at five coordinators.
Right, but you have more schools too, yeah, yeah.
But I do think that having those boots on the ground to work directly with staff, um, you know, when I think about what the special services people have to do, they don't just teach. They have to understand the law. They have to comply. They have to know how to manage adults. They have to be facilitators of teams. That there's so much involved with being a special educator, um, in terms of skillset, that boots on the ground support for that. Um, I think parents, you know, parents of children with disabilities have, they have tremendous needs. Uh, and they need to know they have a go-to person who can be right there when they need support. And, and going through the process and not believe, not knowing that you have a leader who understands special education at very high levels further erodes kind of that trust in the system. Um, and so they, they're looking for that expertise and they'll, and they can't get it readily um, because they don't have a boots-on-the-ground, um, you know, person who gets to know their students. Um, and I think that's a piece of this puzzle. Teachers need to be able to be vulnerable and say, I don't know what to do next. Right? And how, how can we muster that? Or, I don't know how to, how to, you know, what the next level of work is in terms of goals. They really need that. So, I, you know, the coaching model is one that, that I aspire to because I know you can't build it all in one year, but I think if we built the leadership and then built in the coaching, um, and some of that I think we can do with some reallocation of FTE resources. I do think there's some room there to do that, once we develop staffing standards. So it's not all necessarily new money, but we've got work to do to get there, for sure.
Keep, speaking of staffing, can you summarize the adds and, and drops and trade-offs for next year that is in the budget? District-wide, from your perspective, and is it in the right place?
We are, uh, we're not adding anything. We are decreasing, uh, year over year, a speech pathologist.
One point oh speech pathologist.
One point oh speech. Um, we are decreasing, as you see, the, uh, point four OT and the one point oh social worker. Um, in some cases, that was, um, for lack of anything better, for lack of, you know, I met with the principals. We had to, um, Kevin asked that, that we make some decreases in FTE. Um, and so we had to go into the budget and look at, in the land of no, easy decisions, we had to look at the ones that were going to be the least impactful. And that doesn't mean there's no impact. Um, I, I don't want people to think that these people aren't working very, very hard. They are. And it will be, we'll have to redesign some of the way we do business to meet the needs of the kids, given those decreases. Um, but, we will be doing that. Uh, paraprofessionals, while we haven't added any new paraprofessionals, um, we are redesign, redistributing paraprofessionals across, um, the four schools and the community steps program so that some schools will realize a decrease in overall number of paraprofessionals. Um, but we're working with stu-, we're working with the teams at each building to develop, um, to further develop the decision-making structure around paraprofessionals. Again, that currently, there doesn't seem to be a well-understood decision-making structure for how to make that decision um, about when a student needs paraprofessional support, when they don't. Um, so we're redesigning that whole process, and in the, in the annual reviews that are coming this spring, um, the teams will be considering, um, new decision-making processes around them.
How do you decide that now? So the rate of, the number of paras will be flat?
The number of paras is flat.
So, what are you doing now if you decide who gets their, or one-on-one?
Well, what we did, we worked with all the schools, and we looked at, um, we looked at our most complex learners first. Um, so the students with the most intensive needs who, who, um, you know, for example, you have a student who has no, uh, who has very grave difficulty motorically. It makes sense that a personal care assistant is necessary. They need feeding, they need, um, they need all kinds of supports. So we went, we went there first. Um, and then, once we covered all of those needs, we looked at the school building and we worked with the schools to develop what, um, what the kind of more in-classroom supports for groups of kids would be, and that's how we did it.
So that's why, like preschool is seeing an increase in certain staffing, but in community steps, obviously took some paraprofes- or job coaches, so I'm sorry.
Correct, job coaches.
And that's a different, um, and then you're reallocating paras slightly differently.
For where the kids went.
Right, right.
Right, so we have a, a troop moving up from Cider Mill to Middlebrook. So there'll be that group of kids, the staffing is going with them. Um, we have very fused, we have a group coming up from, um, Miller Driscoll to Cider Mill, so there's a decrease at Miller Driscoll because that group, there is, there isn't a commensurate group popping into Miller Driscoll. So, um, that's where that piece is. It's, it's the beginning of have, being able to show you where the kids are going, but we're not, uh, the decision-making structures need to be further fleshed out.
And then, just a curiosity question, and, and this is just probably a different way of thinking, in terms of enrollment under, say, social, social workers and psychologists, looks like a huge decrease. Is that because you have targeted different, a different population now, or?
I think that's how those numbers
You know, I, I, um,
Or how you count them?
In the, particularly in the psychologist, social workers, uh, line, when I looked at, um, how that was presented in the past, and, and there's an argument to be made, I, um, that school psychologists work with the whole school, right? Social workers work with the whole school. They're not solely, so the students they use, that they have the mandated special ed service. Um, in the past, it was just kind of the total population of the school in that line. Um, so I decided to give you the numbers that are receiving direct services.
Okay, and my, my only
It's not a decrease, it's just a different way to look at the number.
But, but my, my point for the public might be, oh my god, you're serving, you have to serve fewer students, so why didn't you reduce your staff? So there just need to be some sort of notation if it works.
You know, I flipped and flopped on that one, and finally I decided
I'll, I'll tell you, for the good of the order, like those, the way those numbers have been reported, there has not, when you go, um, cost center by cost center, uh, as I've looked into this, there is, there's no guiding rationale. And this has bitten us more times, you know, I think particularly around the preschool, uh, because the way the, the preschool functioned, we had halftime kids and we had itinerary kids and we had typical kids, you know, who came for halftime. You could, and then they, they age in. So, the number you had in September and the number you had in June were wildly different. And then, also, the way that they were reported year over year in terms of what the staff of the building were looking at, just undermined the, the credibility of those numbers. And I think we had a conversation about this for that very reason, Deb, like, you're gonna see this dramatic drop, so we just need to commit to, what does this number mean, and stand by recognizing fully that someone is gonna look at, um, the, the, um, difference from one year to the next and misinterpret that. So that's an explana- uh, explanatory point that we have to repeat.
Yeah, or just put an asterisk by it, seeno polo or something.
It's also, I think when we develop a set of staffing standards, right? So in a school with a thousand students, how many school psychologists do you need? Like, we won't be having the argument of how many are you seeing, cause if you're seeing two this year and three next year, we can increase or decrease FTE. I think the, the information we need to come to consensus on as a community is what does a school of X number need? And what are the staffing ratios that make sense in those school psychology, social work, speech and language? And then you have a, a, um, so, to run a building of this size, this is what you need in these domains. And then you have some wiggle room for if a student with profound need or students with profound needs come in, then you can adjust based on them. That's where I think it would make sense as a budget to understand, to run a building of thirteen hundred students, you need this staffing in these domains.
Right, and maybe
And that would be consistent with DURG standards and consistent with, you know, high schools, like high schools or like schools. And then I can come to you and say, I need another point two speech to add for the next three years because this student is coming.
Right, and, and I think that's how counselors, originally at least at the high school, were allocated. There is a, maybe not a specific number, but a range. Two hundred to two twenty-five, or whatever it was for counselor.
A school of X size requires this. Uh, and I think if the community can get behind that conceptually and theoretically, then we won't, this won't be such a dramatic argument year over year. And you won't need to put in a number like, how many students do you serve? You serve a proportion of the students mandated, and you serve a proportion of students who just need some support in that area. Right?
I have a que- uh, que- question about IEPs and their development.
Yes.
Um, typically, a principal would sit in all the IEP developments, right? A PPT, a principal would be
An administrator.
An administrator, okay. But not necessarily one of you, okay?
Of us, right.
So once an IEP is developed, like, what's the review process? Like, what's the, like, does somebody else then, whether maybe it's one of you two, look at that and kind of basically give it your okay?
No.
Or say, will I question this? I wonder, you know?
No, it, we can't, we can't go in and usurp the power of the IEP team.
Okay.
The federal law has prescri- has assigned roles to a team of individuals, inclusive of the parent, who have direct knowledge of the student. So I, as, as the, the assistant superintendent, can't walk in and overrule a PPT team. The PPT team has to make that decision. Um, there needs to be a person at the meeting who can commit district resources. That's what the administrator role is. They have to be able to commit district resources. In doing so, we have to help, the, our, our role, Sharon and my role, is to really help the teams have decision-making structures and have, teams, including the parents, to understand, how do we make this decision? I think my child might need a para. Okay, what are the decision-making structures you wanna be thinking about before you come down on? Because otherwise, it's just arbitrary. I want people to have decision-making structures to, what are the questions we need to ask? Where are the barriers to independence? Are we teaching for independence? Rather than just, oh, he needs a para, so we're gonna throw a para.
Does that exist today? There's structures of questions?
No.
Well, if we attempt, I mean, we attempt
I think people attempt to do it, but there isn't a consistent, so, teams, it, it's not that teams aren't trying, they are.
No, I appreciate that.
But there isn't a consistent through line from preschool all the way on where staff can work with a team, including the parent, to make those decisions. So, they say, well, he's behave, you know, he has behavior. So he needs a para to man the behavior plan. And that may be accurate, but it doesn't really get in deep enough to what are we gonna teach him this year so that he won't need that support next year? Right? What are we going to do differently to support that?
So where do, how do we get to a point where our PPT teams are as well-educated as the two of you are in how to do this?
Well, because we have, we need to have, um, the time to work both in larger groups to help people see the thinking process. And then we have to be able to do the technical assistance in support of those teams. Um, both to parents and to teams on the ground, um, to help them start thinking the way we think. Um, but if we're in, in, if we're working individually all the time, we never get to that collective thinking that helps people learn how to make decisions versus waiting for someone else to make the decision.
I don't wanna say it doesn't exist, because part of what I do do is go from building to building and sit in, um, meetings with all of the teachers that have questions on cases and students, um, on my coaching days, thanks to Chuck. Um, I go into classrooms and I help, I do, like, if they'll say to me, can you come into an observation on a student, so that I can help plan for the student? What are your thoughts about how we can better support them? With the work with all the paraprofessionals, I've been getting in and doing observations, and then going to staffings with the team to talk about, well, I notice that, you know, as far as independence goes, you know, the paraprofessional's doing a great job, but they're not allowing the child to struggle at all and learn. So why don't we back this off, and this is how you can take data on whether it's working or not. So, those conversations that I think that you're asking about do exist, and it is part of what I'm doing. Um, it's just that unfortunately, because of a lack of amount of time and because of, of being across four buildings, I'm, I'm sometimes hitting it after there might be a problem, instead of proactively, when I can get in there and work with the teams as a coach would be doing on a regular basis and say, I noticed with this group of kids or in this particular grade or in this house in Cider Mill, that this is work, this is working great. Um, it's a better way to take data, it's a better way to communicate with parents prior to the PPT so that they don't come to the meeting with anxiety. They already have the answers, and the meeting is just a formality. So those are the proactive pieces, that they do exist. I don't want you to think that we, they don't exist, cause they do. It's just that it's un- it's unfortunately sometimes retroactive to a problem, rather than, let's fix this at the ground so that we don't have to be there, because they've heard it a million times, you know? Um, so that's part of why I think the support, um, if we could find a way to get more support on that piece, it would, it would help across everything. It would help with building the evaluation, the IEP, the intervention, and, and and, and in moving the kids to be more independent learners. Just because they have a para in preschool, doesn't mean they need it in middle school. You know, those are some of the things that we're trying to do.
I just think, you know, I, I guess my questioning comes from, just like, from a budget perspective. It just seems to me, you know, the better our IEPs can be, as far as appropriateness for that child's development.
And specific to that child.
And specific to that child, then...
I think the parents I speak to would tell you that they...
I think that would have a positive effect on our budget.
There's some lag there, I think.
Because I, I can't help but think that there are sometimes, maybe there's stuff being added to the IEPs that maybe isn't necessary, or isn't appropriate, and whereas, obviously, there's the converse that can happen as well, so...
I think everybody is doing the best they know how to do, right?
I would agree with that statement, right?
But again, on any given day, any member of those teams is being asked to be an expert teacher of reading, an expert teacher of this,
Exactly.
an expert teacher of autism, and the, the expert, the level of expertise required. And without that technical assistance and support from some well-versed leadership, and that's not a diss on the principal, they're working really hard, but they can't know everything at the same level.
No, right.
Um, and, that I, the idea, I mean, I, the idea of having some coaches on the ground who teachers could go to and say, look at this data, I don't know where to go next instructionally, or... I think those kinds of things would be incredibly helpful, would result in better IEPs being developed, students having more measurable progress that parents could hold on to, which makes the parents feel like their, things are moving along, and they trust it and know it, and, um, would result in decreases in things like legal fees, um, outplacements, transportation to outplacement, all of those things that we talked about.
No, I, I get, um, increasing the technical expertise within the staff, among the staff, across the staff. And somehow, it seems that the parents, especially in Fairfield County, need a, a slightly different mindset as well, in terms of expectations, because it seems that, to many parents, more is better. So if you talk about a student needing a para, and we're gonna try to increase independence, decrease depend, dependence, all of that, that's a, that's a mind shift from, but he or she won't be taken as well cared of, care of. He's not gonna get the attention, um, he's not gonna make the progress. Because it's always more therapy, more paras, more summertime. And, and to some extent, that argument goes a long way, but then it starts to break down when the return on investment isn't there. But I, I just think that, to some extent, no matter how much, and, and I certainly support increased technical expertise and increased supervision and support and administration, so you can get at these issues. But there's still that parent piece, um, especially among Fairfield County, and especially among some advocate thinking, uh, that we're sort of swimming upstream on that to some extent. And, and that also is a, can be a cost driver. So I don't want us to diminish that, that's all.
It absolutely can be, but I also think in the, you know, people do the best they know how to do. And I think parents are the same.
Absolutely.
Um, and they're looking for, they, they're worried about outcomes. And, you know, they may read an article, or go to a support group, and hear, well, for my child, this made the difference. And so, they want, and they, they're worried about the outcome. So our job is to help them see, and understand, and, and, um, find a trajectory to positive outcomes post-school. Um, but I, yes, Fairfield, the expectations in Fairfield County for all children are extraordinarily high. That is no different for children with disabilities. Um, and parents of children with disabilities in Fairfield County, and, and Wilton is no different, are very, they're well-educated. They know what the rules are, they know how to advocate for what they feel the answer is to the burning question of, how do I get my child to a life of independence, and choice, and meaningful work, and meaningful relationships? They don't always, you know, there are multiple ways to get there, and we have to be able to work with them, so we don't develop a system that's just about yes or no. You know, the parent has to come to the PPT and tell us what they want, and we say yes or no. Our job is to get people to come to the table with, what are the barriers to the life we're looking for? And how do we either teach the child to climb over the wall, break the wall down, or teach the accommodation, or the, the way they get there?
Right.
And that's a process.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, I think sometimes it's too much advocacy and leading into conflict versus partnership within an IEP team, and so that's a delicate act as well.
It sure is.
So whatever, training, or insights, or mindset changes, or shifts, we can help parents with in this, creating a partnership.
Yeah, they're a part, they're a part of this work, is to work, is to create those partnerships, and build strong, positive, trusting relationships with them.
So if you could, uh, wrap up and give us your...
Can I just ask one question? And I, the additional time, is that for summertime?
It's, some is summertime, some is summertime, so, because additional time is all in kind of one category. You have, um, some is summer work, with bringing some teachers together for some of this work. Some of it is going to be, um, after-school work, and some of it is, um, supporting kids after-school hours, kind of work.
So like, twenty thousand dollar increase for the classified additional times?
That's primarily for students, um, primarily at the high school, who want, who need support, but are looking to access extracurricular and co-curricular activity.
Okay.
Chris, I, I just said, yeah, before, uh, it relates to the budget, the DMC study, okay? I, I spoke to it, not our last board meeting, board meeting before, we quote million nine hundred thousand dollar savings. In the one area, and, and they clearly talked about some of the savings that they identified as being able to repurpose those dollars into other things. So it really isn't a little saving number. But the area that they did specifically spell out savings was in OT and PT. And I don't see any change over three years in our budget.
There's a point four decrease coming at you right now.
Well, the, the dollars, as I look at the OT and PT here, uh, as point three, but the dollars are, are still up, even with the point three reduction. We're spending the same dollars we spent, practically, we spent, you know, in two thousand sixteen, it was twenty thousand dollars, okay? There was a significant difference, and so I would challenge you to, we're gonna get called on that. So we've got to be prepared, you know, what is our plan? How are we dealing with, when is the savings gonna be realized? Because that was the one specific area that had hard savings. The other three areas that they broke out were repurposing the dollars. You changed, by doing this, you can repurpose those dollars for other uses. We gotta see that, and we gotta figure out how, how we're gonna respond, because it's gonna come up.
The theory behind that in the DMC report was that if we grouped differently, right?
Whatever it is, well, you guys have gotta be responsive.
Yeah, I think, sure.
You gotta be prepared for that.
But we're not spending one point nine in OT, PT, are we?
No, we're spending six hundred, no, that was, that was, that was, it was part of that one point nine.
Okay.
There were four different areas in the DMC report that broke out.
It's primarily related services.
Okay, but the OT, PT was a specific area that had dollar savings attached to making changes there, and so, we're not seeing. So please, you need to be prepared to deal with it, because the questions are gonna come up.
Sure.
The other questions that are gonna come up, we used to address it, is around the whole pre-K area. We gotta get our hands around that area, and really be prepared to explain and answer those questions, because we're gonna get hit with it again. It's been a constant question.
We should be celebrating pre-K.
Oh, we should be, but we've got to be specifically prepared to be responsive to those areas, because it's gonna come up.
Sure.
Alex is gonna ask about it, he's gonna accuse us of misleading, et cetera, et cetera. So I challenge you, that we've gotta be, have our numbers locked and loaded. Our staffing, our income from, from tuition, whatever it may be, that area's got to be set.
There's a huge increase you're showing in tuition.
Yes.
And are you confident in that?
Yes.
It, it's a huge jump.
In the tuition line?
Yeah.
Um, I think that line, well, you mean revenue?
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, revenue.
Well, we added, um, as of mid-January, we added a fifth class at preschool that is being populated by students from birth to three. Um, and we have more typical kids coming in to have, to fill out that class. So we have some additional revenue coming in, so, and we currently, for the eighteen nineteen school year, um, the team at the preschool just did their open house.
It's phenomenal.
They have a waiting list.
Yeah. We knew that, and we did the remodel. One of the things about remodeling and devoting that, attention to that area was an expectation, we'd be able to tie some, bring kids in. So it's working.
We will have, next year, there will be five classes that run. It is currently fully occupied with typically developing kids. Students with disabilities come in, uh, throughout the year, based on their third birthday, and are child fine, so those are two things. But the typically developing kids, the students who generate revenue, they are fully subscribed and have a waiting list for the eighteen nineteen school year.
Okay, then my question would be on your enrollment numbers. It doesn't show the dramatic increase. You know, it, it seems year to year, classroom thirty-five, forty to thirty-five, and peers thirty to thirty-five. That's not, doesn't seem commensurate with the amount.
We changed the model, I mean, we essentially doubled the cost of tuition.
Okay, so, yeah, so things like that, enrollment doesn't show...
Enrollment's gonna show, it's gonna be the question.
Okay, Andrew, um, we've given everyone else a chance to give us their, if I had a million dollars, what's your... Um, if you could put things back into your budget, what would your, be your priorities?
Well, I think, you know, I think if it were, if it were solely me, I would say we need the leadership of a secondary coordinator, and those coaches that we talked about. Um, but, uh, right now, I think the areas where we have vulnerabilities, I think you've heard it from the principals, they're concerned about whether or not we, um, have sufficient paraprofessional resources right now. John Mitchell, I think, was clear about that.
So more, more?
I don't think we need more, um, but, I also think, I don't know if, if a new student moved in tomorrow with very significant needs, who really needed it, we don't have any wiggle room for that. So that's an issue right now. But I think more importantly, the social worker, um, would be my fir-, if you needed to put something, or if you wanted to and thought it was necessary, I think the social worker at Miller Driscoll and, um, Cider Mill is the piece that I would suggest.
And that was on our tiers.
That's in the tier one.
What about the special ed secretary?
The special ed secretary, I think, is a position that is needed at Middlebrook. I don't have a handle on the total pool of secretarial support around the district, as to whether or not... Middlebrook needs a s-, person trained and devoted to the special ed process. What I, what I'm, I don't know is whether or not that can be reallocated from other resources, so, I think, I would, you know, I would look for...
Yeah, I'm not sure that it can. To get that kind of expertise that we need, I think we need to hire, you know, looking around. I've been looking at that for the last couple of weeks, and I think, over the course of the next year, um, we're gonna be able to do some restructuring, and looking primarily at the high school, where they have some staffing opportunities.
If they need someone in that position at Middlebrook, for sure.
Yeah, no, I'm just...
I just don't know if it's an add-back or a reallocate.
Got it.
That's what I don't have the, the handle on the whole district to know.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, before we adjourn our Board of Finance, does it make a moment, or do you, do you have anything to add? Thank you very much for, um, your time, Mr....
I just wanna reiterate how much I've learned in the last six hours of these meetings, it's, it's been very, very interesting. I really appreciated the explanation of the, the coaching. Um, I'm already getting questions from people about coaching. One of the questions I'm getting is, is, is it reflecting in our standardized test results? I'd be interested to see, you know, what, what statistics there are there, or, or not. But, uh, and, and, special ed has always been a very particularly difficult area for a layman to understand. Um, so I'm beginning to get more insights into that, which is, which is valuable, so I just appreciate being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say, Ben, please reiterate to the Board of Finance, I did a lot of, um, I did a lot of kind of workshops with the Board of Finance in Fairfield over the years, to help them understand special ed in general, and how the cost drivers are. So I, and I would be very, individually, in groups, in home meetings, I'd be very happy to do that.
What would be very useful is, after this year's budget, when we've got one of our quieter meetings, if you could come in and spend half an hour, take us through the challenges, I, I don't know, let's understand.
Andrew did a write-up for...
We're gonna go ahead and adjourn, so, thank you, Ben, thank you.
Okay.